I can't slide by this. The first one is in Section 2, that's on page 2. And just a little nitpicky thing, the spell check says interchangeable spell drawn. Says there's supposed to be an E on there, G-E. But my other question is if we're talking about interchangeable use of terms, and we talk about the interchangeable use of marijuana based on how it's spelled, I'd also address, because it's different in a number of places here, the interchangeable use of Charter Township of Marquette, Marquette Township and Township should not be addressed the same way as we did with the wording of marijuana.
Personally, I don't see what, but... And my spell check says interchangeable does have an E.
Yeah, that's what I said.
This one does.
This one has it.
I redlined version of Section 2 doesn't have an E. Where it says interchangeable use of marijuana and marijuana.
The one I'm looking at.
Don't know what to say.
Does yours say difference of distinction or difference or distinction at the end of that section?
Difference or distinction.
Yeah.
G-A-B-L, you're right. I was looking at the wrong one. The bold lettering there.
It's the underlined section.
The underlined, sorry.
Oh, I got it up in the heading, got it. No, 100% correct. Because I, the only reason I knew my spell check had in it is because I caught the one in the small print and I obviously missed it in the heading. We'll fix it.
Well, I was just so excited that I could catch where a lawyer misspells on.
Well, that's kind of a small reward because it happens fairly often.
My other question is, is if we're removing on page 5, 6, under B, we're removing the references to adult use recreational marijuana designated consumption establishment. Should we not read references to it on page 5, under Section 4, where the total number is allowed? The last line says designated consumption establishment. We change it from a 2 to a 0, but should we not remove the whole line?
Yes, and there's, there is a version, and Friday we were trying to forward this so it would get in the planning commission packet. And there is a version out here that exists in the world that has removed that. And the version that you received obviously doesn't have that change. But yes, that change has been made on that one. That has been eliminated.
Page 5, or Mr. Regan. On page 5, should also temporary marijuana event be removed? Or?
Same thing for temporary marijuana event.
Wait a minute, where are we at now?
We're on, Section 4 is on page 5. The graphic of numbers allowed.
Yeah.
Following the same logic that we used every place else, we should remove entirely references to temporary marijuana event and designated consumption establishment.
Oh, there, it could be either way, but where we're listing the number allowed, there's no ambiguity. I aired on the side of caution and left the zeros in there.
Okay.
That way, if somebody calls, well, what about this? This is a certain type of marijuana facility that the state says can exist that makes it appear or confirms that the township has examined that possibility of including those, has declined to include those. So I misspoke a moment ago. I was looking at page 6, in Section 5B, and we removed the adult use recreational marijuana designated consumption establishment from there. That's, that I was speaking of where we removed it because it's not in GB. It's not anywhere. And I don't think, I'm just looking to see if the temporary, I don't think temporary is in there, a temporary use or temporary event or whatever it's called. But yeah, that was, so I guess I could be persuaded if the planning commission had strong thoughts on it otherwise. But that rationale for leaving the zeros in there where we're listing the number of establishments or facilities allowed, it shows we could, it's kind of like if you do a will and you want to exclude your black sheep son, you could be, you could just be quiet and say, omit him from the will completely, but it's much more clear if you say, and I leave him nothing. So mission is intentional and not a mere oversight. Same type of rationale here that we didn't just forget about temporary marijuana events or designated consumption establishments. We thought about it and decided to have zero included establishments or facilities.
If I got the spelling changed, I can live with the others either way.
Yeah, I postponed because I specifically changed the one. And the other one, I obviously was, I don't know what time of day it was. I proofread it, but I, that one went right by me.
That was a bad thing.
Section 4.
Mr. Hicken?
Yeah, and in that, Section 4 underneath that, per table, there is a caveat underneath that that says they're going to, will be reviewed every year. You know, one day we may decide to do something like that. So I don't think there's any reason to take it out if you have a zero there now.
Yeah, I'm good leaving the zeros.
Yeah, I agree with Roger Zappa.
So what do we do now? Do we approve it as amended?
I don't think so. There's a, or are we actually approving it for recommendation to the board as amended?
Directly to the board as amended, if that's your desire.
One quick question that I raised a while back. Let's see, no, I guess, never mind, I guess that did get addressed. Is that one time version that the provisioning centers and the, oh, no, it is still. If you look on page 6 in the chart, there's nothing wrong from a legal standpoint on this in the least. But if you go down about two-thirds of the way down the chart, medical marijuana provisioning center and an adult use marijuana retailer, they're pretty similar types of businesses. And in some other municipalities, those are the types of things that get co-located. We are allowing a medical marijuana, basically store, to exist in the development district. Whereas an adult use marijuana store or retailer, we are not. That's completely within the prerogative of the township. I just wanted to run it past one more time and make sure that that was what was wanted. I'm not recommending it be anything different, but I just, that was a slight, you know, the two are similar and yet they're different zoning districts and completely permissible. But I just wanted to point that out in the event you wanted to have some discussion as far as why or why not.
Is that in Article 15?
Yeah, this chart came from Article 15. It's the same as 15.
I don't see it in the, stop on 15 yet. I mean, he brings up, I think Attorney Zappa, a good point. I agree. Why are we not allowing in Development District, especially if the, seems like trend to have two co-existing providers in one facility?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. I was just wondering if it would rest the same way in Article 15.
Article 15 is about secure transport.
No, he means Article 15 of the domographs of the zoning ordinance. And it's.
On page 8, it's included in both districts. And page 9, the other one is just when one district. So I agree, I think they should both be put in the same district.
Oh, okay. Yeah, recreational marijuana retailer to the DD. Should that be, that should be DD. Correct. Another amendment.
Okay, then I don't understand where we went here. The one, Article 15, page 8, lists medical marijuana provisioning center, which is in line with page 6 of the ordinance. And it refers to medical marijuana provisioning center. I haven't seen where adult use recreational marijuana retailer is in here yet. Page 9?
Although it's labeled recreational marijuana retailer.
Okay, so that would have to represent over in DD. That was my point that I was trying to get to. See what I was talking about? If you're going to change it on page 6 of the ordinance, then you need to put an S.
Yes.
In no more page time of the zoning ordinance. Jason Philary changes. Did he leave us?
Oh, he's there. Yeah, so I don't know how that relates back to the motion that was made earlier.
What happened?
Is the restroom? Over that, Jason?
I'm sorry, I thought you guys were saying if I was still with you or not.
Well, bring it up speed where we're talking about. We're talking about page 6 of the ordinance. And the graph where it says adult use recreational marijuana retailer is adding Development District there to the one directly above it. Nope, back over to the other side. There.
This is all going to get changed by Roger anyway, so I'm not really concerned with what it looks like on here.
Okay, but what we've talked about then is, is Article 15 we approved as amended.
Yeah.
On page 9 of Article 15, it needs to also reflect an S under recreational marijuana retailer under Development District. That's what all that was about.
S in DD.
Our motion to send it to the county came after the close of the public hearing. We had no input from the public in any shape or form. Maybe to be completely clean, if trying to make this suggested revision, we ought to maybe have a motion to reconsider that last one because, so that it, being submitted with this proposed amendment. Follow that?
I thought it was as amended, so we can't, oh, because it's closed in the public hearing. Okay.
Okay, so we're going to reconsider the motion.
To send it to the County Planning Commission.
Okay, we're going to reconsider the motion to.
We'll prove it.
The county review period. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're going to reconsider the motion that was made on that specific agenda item.
Okay. And then, what's that take for a vote to reconsider it?
A move. You're going to make the motion? I just did. Okay, I'll second that. But then we have to, okay.
Then you got to go back and do it again. Okay, so the motion is to reconsider the motion, the previous motion with respect to the marijuana zoning text amendment. That was motions made by Dennis.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And Steve?
Yes.
Okay, that's 4, 0, 1 absent.
Now we have to remake that.
Now you have to remake the motion. That as amended now, it'll include the addition of the special use permit under Development District now, correct? Because amended?
Yes. For, when the minutes come out, it might be really good to be specific with as amended with regard to that change. Adult use marijuana in the DD district or something like that. That way, it will make sense to people, add it a year from now or five years from now.
We'll add that in for the planning commission. We'll get that right for you.
We need to make that motion, move the zoning text amendment pertaining to adult, to adult use recreational marijuana to review period as amended. And the amendment includes the addition, the addition of special use permit in Development District under recreational marijuana designated, recreational marijuana retailer. Now, do we need something in the motion to move the board ordinance with that to the county?
We should do that separate. Shouldn't we just do this?
As I asked him, Roger.
The board, you need to go to the county.
Okay. Then we don't need them to state about the board ordinance?
Yeah, it's only going to the county. The actual ordinance is only going to the county for reference. It's for their approval. That, I'm talking about the marijuana ordinance. Only the zoning ordinance is going for their review period. We are out of courtesy, more or less, or to give them a complete picture of what we're doing, providing a copy of something that we are not really required to provide them. Attaching the marijuana ordinance along with the zoning ordinance.
Planning Commission froze. They might have lost internet again. We should just reschedule this damn thing. There was a problem with the internet at the township hall before, before Ryan came on. That's why there was a five-minute delay. Unbelievable. I'm going to call him right now and see. Can we table the public hearing?
The public hearing's done. We closed the public hearing. And all we really have to do is get them back on board to finalize this motion.
Yeah, Ryan's not answering. You lose your internet?
I did not. Well, you froze all of a sudden. Yeah, I don't have internet.
Okay. Um, he doesn't have internet, Roger.
There's something going on. I don't think the office, our office doesn't have internet here. I was using the additional router that's in the community room.
Yeah.
They were in the middle of making a motion to reconsider that. Yeah, there it is. I'm going to try to see if I can connect back again here.
Okay, he's going to try to reconnect here.
Okay. You send me the Zoom meeting information to my personal account? Gmail account?
Um.
Well, never mind, I have a personal.
Okay.
Let me see if I can reconnect here. I'll give you a call.
Oh, you can stay with me here, hold on.
All right. All right, you're on speaker.
Stay focused, you're good. This is a, this is a long one.
Says, let's see if you're actually connected. Okay, I'm connected. I'm going to try to type in the Zoom meeting info. Are you, you able to connect this?
I can forward it to you if you like, but you can probably type it faster.
Yeah, let me type it in here. US.
The motion, I support it.
Okay, the motion was to move the marijuana zoning ordinance text amendment to the Marquette County review period as amended to include Article 15, Section 1505, recreational marijuana retailer with a special use permit in the district. And I second. And you seconded that. And I'm a yes. I am a springer's a yes. Steve?
Yes.
And Dennis? Passes 4, 0, and 1. That was hard. And 1, 1 absent. Oh, okay. All right. We are on to. On business, MAMA launch initiative documents and discussion, Mr. Ferraro. Anything for us on that?
Are you done with me?
Did we move the board ordinance?
Who knows, Roger?
Did we move the board ordinance?
Question about the board ordinance. We have to move that. Do we have to make a motion to move that?
Oh, to, well.
Make a motion to the county for informational purposes?
No, we don't need to make, we don't need to do that. The only thing, what my hesitation was, is whether you want to make a motion to send it up to the township board at this point when you still have the 30-day input from the county planning.
I wouldn't want that. I would want to take a look at the final draft after the changes get made. I don't think we're in a big rush for that anyway.
Yeah, I would concur with that sense. But by the same token, if you were in a rush and wanted to get it to the board, there wouldn't be any problem with that either, so.
I guess the last thing I hate to see happen is the board approve that ordinance without all these own amendments gone through county, reading 1 and 2.
So at the next meeting, we'll bring back the revised draft for you guys to consider. And even at that point, you can hang on to it until the county gets back to us.
And when you say reading 1 and 2?
Well, when it, when the text of, the zoning ordinance text amendment gets through the 30-day review period by the county, we have to reconsider it again and send it to the board for a first and second reading at two separate meetings.
To the township.
To the township.
Okay. I'm too, and Roger, I think.
Yeah, you're good, Roger.
As far as I know, I think we're okay. I don't think we have any other leaks to.
Okay, well, as much of a pleasure as it's been, I'm going to leave then.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, unfinished business, Mr. Ferraro, on launch initiative document discussion.
Oh, I pride this was on the agenda because I thought we, at the last meeting, we had discussed that we can't do anything per se now, but the only thing to do was ask Ryan to forward the hyperlinks to the three documents, namely the Explorer Solutions Report, September 18, 2019, Steve Shenden's letter to MAMA, which was a, their RFI dated September 20, 2019, and then Mr. Shenden's October 28, 2019, to MAMA, which he recommended Granite Loma as a site. And I assume you had sent those all to the township?
The township board did receive what was initially included in last meeting's packet. I would have to recall and see if it's were sent additionally. And if not, then they can't get sent again.
Okay, thanks.
And it would follow the same process as what, what had been the last planning commission meeting or the one prior to that, just for form of purposes to the township board to consider.
Oh, you asked last time.
That was, the board talked about it, but there wasn't any action taken.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, 7C, recreation village proposal. Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Dietrich said, we have this in our packet. I understand you presented to the board.
Yeah.
Also, I, sorry, just one second. I just also want to mention, I did receive in the mail last couple of days, the recreation village proposal information sheet. So I wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add. If you're a board member or one of the planning commissioners, you probably saw the presentation that was done. Essentially, we're asking for the voters to consider a two-year village at .5 mils, up to .5 mils for maintenance and upkeep of our existing facilities. And I just included a copy of the presentation in there for your information.
Go away, Regan. You're up next. All right, I guess I, all right, thank you, Jason. 7D, I had to add this. Seven D, I had to add this in here and need some information about what the board did recently, I believe. But anyways, you know, one of the things is a page I printed out, it shows how much the chair, secretary, vice chair, and other commissioners make per meeting. And I know the reason I brought this up was because the board was discussing increases. And the other thing is that what can we do to attract and to retain say, good planning commissioner, but dedicated planning commissioners, and I was hoping that we might have a discussion on this and see see if there's any ideas. I know that this when Ray Adam meeting years ago, when I was first on the planning commission, Ray and me we raised the rate to $35 an hour. Doesn't look like there's been much in that. Mr. Wigan has explained that the board is offering or is going to increase across the board by two and a half percent. So that should be reflected in next year's. Yep, it was the board last week took action to raise for all of the non-elected bodies that get paid, and that is the planning commission, the board review, and as the planning board goes to effective January 1st, 2021, to raise their, their compensation by two and a half percent. And then part of the motion was that it be every year for the same, for the same reason. So we're trying to establish that they annual two and a half percent raise to keep pace with everybody else. Okay, along with that, as everyone knows, I will not be on the planning commissioner, planning commission at, after December. I'm not sure what Mr. Wigan's gonna do, but I know that we sat for a number of months, almost a year before we were able to fill a fifth seat on our planning commission. And in talking with Supervisor Durant, she does have another person. But I understand she's trying to talk this other person into possibly applying for my position. Or at least filling my, filling a seat on the planning commission. So it just seems to me that we need to get the information out. We need to be looking for another planning, at least one other planning commissioner with that's all I have on that. Now, if I could add to that, to your goals. As everybody's aware that I am not running for a board position as of yet. So my position on the planning commission was as the board representative. So my position on the planning commission ends at the end of November of this year. Yes, I saw that. I'm glad you spoke to that and didn't want to bring that up. So we're gonna have two open seats. Well, actually. Yeah, less than a month or a month from now, we're gonna have an open seat. So this is something that we should be you know, it's asking the supervisor to move forward on or to bring it to the board.
Mr. Ferraro, so Dave, are you so what, your term is up, but are you gonna just say I quit or, I mean, are you gonna reapply for reappointment?
Clarify that my term as a board member is up at the end of November.
As a township board.
As a township board member. And that goes hand in hand with my appointment to the planning commission.
So.
Because I'm here as the board reps, and that term is also off at the end of November.
Well, you could be ready, could you?
I could, but I don't have any plans to do that.
You don't want to, you don't want to sit with us anymore?
Oh, don't take it personally.
Yeah.
I am considering this. In the
Okay.
Talk to my daughter or my wife about it. I'm spending four hours a day teaching school and I'm thinking that's enough.
I didn't realize you were, you were working too late.
No, I'm retired, but, but.
But you're teaching.
Yeah, Monday through Friday, I'm doing homeschooling with my daughter. It takes about four hours a day.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, with that, let's move on to correspondence.
Well, may I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
So you're leaving. Then you're leaving.
So this, a chair, a position comes open at the end of November for him and then end of December for me.
Yeah. But does Lynn Durant have an obligation to appoint somebody to fill your position?
Yeah, she has thought of, if it's, it's her duty to appoint somebody and then it has to be approved by the board. Whoever she appoints.
But I mean, are we gonna be left without a forum?
Well, Jim's theory, you have three.
That's a forum. But will there always be a board member?
Yes.
On the nation, so.
They will appoint.
So that, that, you're, 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 you will be gone, but your position on the board representing the board at planning commission will be filled.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll be short one.
Yeah, there will be. Period. There should be a board appointed. Yeah, that's a good point. Okay.
All right. Or you have the, that's gonna be.
No idea. So that's something though that we need to ask the board about, and Lynn, that we do need somebody in December.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm sure she's aware of it. Okay, all right. All right, let's move on to correspondence. Road Committee Minutes. Mr. Wigan is chair of the road committee. The road committee discussed the street light analysis results and the potential recommendations to the manager. The recommendations include clearing existing lights of obscuring vegetation, upgrading existing halogen lights to LED as well as additional lights needed to comply with the current township light ordinance. That's still in discussion. We're still working at the, at the road committee level. And the committee also approved the 2021, 2021 road rehabilitation maintenance recommendations that we already considered tonight. But that's it for the road committee. Okay. For the recreation committee, you have a copy from August 18. Also, there was a meeting held on September the 15th. And the draft minutes indicate there was quite a discussion on the recreation millage. We previewed Mr. McCarthy's 14-page document that he and Mr. Dickerson created to inform voters on the millage. It's it was recommended to move to the board. The board is, Mr. Wigan has indicated has has acted on that. We also received this as a result of the recommend, recommending that that gets sent out. It was supposed to go out with the utility building, but it looks like it was a separate mailing. I don't know, Heritage, a heritage trail connector. Chairperson Carruth in question about when we're gonna be able to put some toilet facilities at Chum Park. Discussion on that. Mr. McCarthy noted that could be financed through a small MNRTF development grant. Also talked about the most likely they would have to be a vault toilet as there is no at this point, any sewage or what we do about water, getting water in there. Committee member comments. Mr. Ruth inquired about some hardwood property that was recently sold by the city. Apparently it's not near us and shouldn't affect any property near the township. Mr. Carruth asked for an update on native landscaping and Mr. McCarthy informed him that both parks have been addressed and reimbursement and closure on three grants will be submitted. Due to the pandemic, the underpass grant needed a one-year extension. Mr. Rue also reported that the events committee is still moving forward with the tree lighting and the arrival of holiday figures of being safe from possible transmission viruses. It is scheduled from November 24th at the Westwood Mall. That's my report on the recommendation. Okay. Next, downtown development authority. We, I'm a member of that. We had a meeting last night, 5:30. Some of the things we're doing, we're reviewing the bylaws. We elected a secretary, Dan Shanahan, volunteered, Chief Shannon, and volunteered to do that. We also talking about the MDOT 2021 project and what could be done about lighting in the corridor. We one of the things that was brought up is that there's a study, apparently, and this is what I've been told, it cost us $60,000 for the study from 2016. And rather than just shell that, we'd like to run it by Board of Light and Power. And also maybe some other agencies to see if this is still viable. Got a lot of money invested in this. We should be able to move forward with that. So that's been addressed.
What's the study again, Mike?
I'm sorry.
What was, what was, kind of, is the subject matter of the study?
This is a, it's a lighting study that was done for the Downtown Development Authority.
Okay.
I believe that millage money was used to help pay for the preparation of this. And I think it needs to be revisited. It's a little too late, and it also doesn't have to happen with the 2021 project, because this could be a standalone project. Something we have to work with MDOT on and make sure we get their standards and also hopefully some help from Board of Light and Power. One other thing we discussed was the they wanted an update on the Sustainable Built Initiative Grant. And it pretty much has come to a conclusion. There is 56 pages in the final report. And also, Mr. McCarthy, Aaron Ferguson, Dr. Wayne Baer, and Brad Newman did a presentation at the MAPS conference on this. And I thought it was great. And so unless there's any questions about this, this is something that we're gonna look at. And Mr. McCarthy, we kind of look, there was a particular site that I believe was along the Aaron Harris Trail that we're I think moving towards, but we also have the DDA interested maybe in Site Four. That's the kind of a rain garden culvert improvement. So that's something that we should talk about, the DDA, and what, how you see this progressing at some point. But that's gonna be on our next agenda to look through this at the DDA. And other than that, I don't have anything to report on that. Last item I asked to have placed on this is the MAP Conference. You have a, I gave you a page of front back of the sessions. I attended six of the sessions. They were all worthwhile. Learned a lot. This first one, that's the keynote under Wednesday, October the 7th. This is really something that not only all planning commissioners, but board members, managers. Anyone that's a decision maker in the township should, should see this. I don't know if we can it'd be nice to find out from MAP whether or not there's any opportunity for whether or not it's just the slideshow document or any opportunity to you know, probably have to pay for it, but for decision makers to listen to what this gentleman had to talk about. Of course, he's the president of a company and they're selling their particular services, but it was very interesting and very comprehensive. 1115, gentlemen, I can't see his name here. Let's see here. I'm sorry, yeah, 1115. And actually, the beauty of this, I didn't watch these at a particular time. I, many of them weren't pre-recorded, so I was able to watch them at home at night and on my own time. So this, this was a good addition. The beauty of it is you didn't have to drive down to Lansing or wherever. You'd have to sleep in another room and a few different food. I found this to be well worth my time. And then there's also at 2:45 on Wednesday. It was real interesting how they were dealing with stormwater management and their metro parks and it's collaboration of different municipalities. On Thursday, this gentleman here, Richard Rothstein keynote presentation. It was very interesting in how our past and federal guidelines actually created segregation. And he has written a book called The Color of Law, A Forgotten History of How Our Government Segregated America. It's very interesting presentation.
Very, very.
Of course, 4:00 PM was, it was scheduled. That's the presentation of Mr. McCarthy and the other three people I mentioned occurred on Thursday. Friday morning, if I'm sure Jason and maybe somebody who remember Patrick Coleman was one of the presenters. He lives up in Houghton. And along with people from Edmonton, Canada. It was interesting. I mean, what we can do within our township to encourage winter activities, get people outside, and you know, this is gonna be even more critical with this pandemic. So there are some things that it'd be nice to talk about or talk to the rec committee about that would address some of the things that we could do to actually do programming in the winter, get people outside. And that was it. Those are the six that I attended. And I don't know if Mr. McCarthy would like to say anything about the one that he was part of, but I thought it was a very good presentation.
Well, thanks. Yeah, it was a proud moment for a staff person. Been doing this for 15 years now, at least with the Michigan Association of Planning, and that was the first project that I've been a part of that was presented at a state conference. So that was exciting. And I thought it was hard to tell, but I thought our project was pretty well received. And I did receive a couple of follow-up emails, which was interesting too, asking to share the, the documents and stuff. So I forwarded those along to some folks downstate. Got a little bit crunched for time at the end. I was kind of the anchorman on the presentation and my time ran a little short, so I kind of sped through what was there, but the point is is that I think we got a lot more value than just what the monetary value of whatever they said the deliverables were gonna be. Between that and the Parsons Brinkerhoff study that was done that Mike referred to earlier. And this study, which was a design intervention study, really. I think those are very valuable documents for the DDA specifically. If you, and I, I talked to manager Kangas this morning. And actually, prior to the DDA meeting too. And it's nice to hear that there's some traction with some of the DDA projects because you know, if presented in the correct way and having those visuals and having those studies to back up some of the improvements that we want to make, I think there is the ability to apply for another larger TAP grant that we just, we talked about, which would be a case where we could partner with MDOT. And a lot of those design features could be implemented as part of a project like that. Outside of just the road resurfacing project, the road resurfacing project can happen. And then afterwards, you know, we could mobilize to do some projects that benefit that east of Commerce area. The DDA, you know, it's a very powerful tool and one of the only tools that we have in the township. We don't have CDBG money because we don't have a, you know, we're not a municipality. You know, we're not a municipality that has a certain population. We don't get the. Redevelopment-ready community funding because we don't have a traditional downtown. So the DDA and the ability to work with the business community. It's almost a better program to have because if you get a good plan together. And you've got, you know, a master plan for an area along the corridor done. You can really sell that to the business community and get some buy-in and perhaps you could even get some cooperative financing. I wouldn't say outside of a millage, but at least get the millage support. So that, you know, you get a couple of projects under your belt. And they're positive on the business community, you know, maybe they'll allow you to go back to the to the well, if you will. And so I really like the the DDA. And if you read through the state statute language. There are many, many things that can be included in the DDA, whether it be landscaping, public infrastructure. Utility, farmers markets, facade improvements. There's a lot of different ways. To utilize that tool. So it's nice to see that the DDA is being active. And hopefully we can come up with a DDA master plan of some sort that would allow us to capitalize on the momentum that we have.
My only disappointment is that in the description, they did not list you as one of the participants and one of the, I mean, you. Showed the nuts and bolts about. You know, what what this can lead to, just like you you talked about. So that's my complaint with MAP.
Yeah, well, you know, that's a dog and pony show, Mike. And you know that Michigan State Extension has to submit those projects to MAP so that they can continue to. You know. Arlay their their ethos on everybody. I mean, we're very beneficial in that case, but yeah. Especially from the standpoint of what they wanted to do initially and then what we sharpened their pencils to do in the end, which is something that is practical for us. And not just some fancy computer work done downstate at a at a planning school.
Thank you, Jason. Also, I skipped over the Z V A meeting and public hearing last night is either. You know, Mr. McCarthy or.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, we had a Z V A meeting last night. There was initially a zoning compliance application for a large accessory structure. A piece of property that was off of four ninety-two, sixteen hundred four ninety-two. It's right across from the entrance of Lake Enchantment Drive. The applicant was Tom Kilpala. Well, rather, he's the property owner. The applicant was his son Andrew Kilpala. So they did petition and and sent in an application for Z V A. Deal. For that large accessory structure. They requested variants from the front yard setback line. I believe that the the front yard setback line. Was fifteen feet away rather than the required thirty-five feet away. But there are some some geology rocking out rock out from Swetland. Reasons as to why that was. And the other request was for the square footage allowance for accessory structures. On properties that are three acres or larger in the rural residential districts currently. If you have three more acres. In the rural residential districts, you're allowed twenty-five hundred square feet of accessory structures. Combined, they had seven hundred square feet at their disposal. And they requested the variance for, I believe, twenty-four hundred additional square feet. Their total property is about a hundred and twelve acres in size. So when you take into, when you take that into account and which is what the Z V A did. They took that into account as far as the size of the acres or the property. And the rural kind of residential feel of the neighborhood. And the front yard setback had some details as far as. How it related to the actual road front on County Road four ninety-two.
And those those are both approved.
They were both approved.
Yeah. You you they approved variances. For side yard setbacks for somebody that a hundred and twelve acres of land?
Yeah, it was actually a front yard setback. And the way that it it was is because the corner of their property right there. They actually had two separate parcels. They're contiguous right next to each other. And the the way that.
It's a big rock out crop.
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, again, he has a hundred and twelve acres and he wants to put it on top of rock. I don't I don't get why you would give somebody a variance for something like that. We've got a hundred and twelve acres and you can put it somewhere else.
Well, the Z V A had had a number of maps and then some.
Yeah, I got that. You know, when I was on a Z V A, you had to have a damn good reason and that that wouldn't have been one of them for me. Just curious.
I they they approved both variants requests.
Yeah, no, I can see that. I'm sure they will. They did.
My question is. Front setback, you're talking about off of four ninety-two?
Right, yeah, front yard setback.
So it. Comes up to the right away by.
No, it does not. There's another parcel in front of them.
Okay.
There was their parcel. It it's out of sight. If there's, you can't see anything from the road. That was one of the considerations. And the other fact is that they had a bunch of property, so. It it didn't, in in our view or the Z V A's view. You know, pose any issues. To anybody. Including the neighbors. Nobody had a question. In fact, we had one letter of support from them and a budding property owner.
They didn't just set fifty feet off the road right away. There's fifty feet of their property line, which is set behind another piece of property.
Which was considered front yard because of how large it is, yes.
If the man looked at it, it might be. A side yard. Okay. Okay. Thank you. I was trying to envision a building twenty-five hundred square feet that's fifty feet up.
That probably wouldn't have happened.
I wouldn't have thought so. I was a little surprised.
So they they had a hardship that wasn't self-created. Okay. We are on to announcements. What's that really?
That's self-created?
Is it what they call?
Yeah, oh, heck yes. Yeah, oh, heck yes.
Steve was throwing a shoe all over it. Okay, let's move on to announcements.
I went from the best when I was on the Z V A.
I'm sorry.
I learned from the best when I was on the Z V A.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Announcements. Mr. Ferraro, nothing to say. Mr. Wigan, oh, I'm right. Mr. Haken.
Got a new cat. Our cat kitten brought it in house.
Well, on that, I can make an announcement that the population's not changed because one of my cats died.
Okay, I do not have any other announcements. Other comment, do we have anybody out there receiving? Any additional comments? I guess we kind of went through that unless there's additional comments, I'll just go around one more time, Mr. Ferraro. Mr. Wigan.
No, I'm good.
No from Springer, no, Mr. Hakenin. Any comments that staff would like to make? All right, with that, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at nine thirteen. And our next meeting is October twenty-eighth at seven.
All right, thanks, guys. Thanks for coming. Good night.